So now we are going to start a study class on the laws of secret. So again, again, we are going to study the after verse. How do you do them? So this book is from mysterious, those are experiences. Many people live every day without being aware of mysterious, mysterious phenomena. But to the spiritual eyes of religious leader, the world is truly a brighter place that is guided by another set of rules. So today, we are going to contemplate what this means to us. Hmm, so why this is, this book has so many mysterious episodes? What perspective the religious leader have when they, when he see that world? So today we are going to, we are going to read a lot the passage from the first chapter, the secret part of religion. So let's start. So Louis, could you read a lot this passage?
We can find similar spiritual fields which cannot be seen with the physical eye in various places on earth as well. There are locations in Japan that are sometimes called power spots, places where you can get spiritual energy and these places attract young female visitors.
Yes, thank you. Yes, that is, this is the main point of this, of today's session. Thank you, Louis. And how about Maryam? Could you help us?
This term is usually used rather lightly, but there are certain places with very strong spiritual magnetic fields. There is no doubt that this place are true power spots. There are special spiritual fields in such places and the spirit world exists in many of them.
Hmm, yes, thank you very much. Yes, we have that some strong spiritual place. But also, that what's, what's, hmm, what's important is that the spirit world also exists in the power spot. Hmm, so this spot is, this will coexist with the spirit world. And how about, uh, uh, Hannah? Hannah, could you help us?
For example, there are spiritual fields in mountains that attract people's feet and places where ascetics have been training themselves since the old days and this spiritual field exists in the spiritual, spirit world as well. As a place such as Mount Fuji which attracts people's feet is one of the example. Such spiritual fields exist in large numbers inside and at the foot of Mount Fuji.
Yes, thank you. This is very important point too. And thank you for turning, for telling us for a pastime. And how about Ida? Could you help us?
Um, Mount, what is Aso? Mount Aso is it? Yeah, Mount Aso also has such field and there are spiritual fields in Tsukushima, the pre, prefecture as well. Thus, a spiritual field is often found in places that attract strong faith or that have large spiritual ruins. In many cases, these power spots are connected to other places as well.
Thank you. Yes, so we have a special place like Mount Aso or Mount Fuji because people are based in mountains. If they gather the face, there appears a speech, spiritual special place. So this is very important point. So could you read aloud, Jennifer?
Okay. Hello, we has an access point around Tibet is an especially well-known place. It's generally believed that there is a spiritual field in the Himalayas called Shabala where yogis and senin, hermits undergo, um, ascetic training. This is open talk about with the circle of Teosu. I think some people undergoing spiritual training in India and some senin type people have, hmm, senin type people in China have actually visited this place.
Hmm, thank you, Jennifer. Yes, Shambhara is a key word in the laws of secret. And the next year, master give us, will give us the new law series called The Laws of Muzakya. And the master will talk about Shambhara again. So let me read aloud. Indeed, there is a spiritual magnetic field for spiritual training inside the tallest mountains on earth. Some souls go, go there to undergo spiritual training after death. And there are also places where yogis and senin send their souls there to undergo spiritual training while they are still alive. Hmm, so even the dead people will visit it, will visit spiritual magnetic field. And how about Luysan? Could you help us?
Spirits carry out various kinds of training and most of them seek to attain a higher level of spiritual awakening. Among them, there are a certain number of spiritual leaders referred to as masters. There are also those who are called avatars instead of masters.
Hmm, thank you. So master talk, now start, start talking about the levels of, uh, the level of masters. Yeah, masters and also the avatars. Avatar is kind of like a master of masters. Hmm, so there is a level between, you know, even enlightened people. And Maryam, could you help us?
They are usually a little superior to masters. Amateurs are great spiritual masters who normally give guidance and special secret training in the spiritual, but they are also born on earth once every few thousand years to be a savior or to launch a great spiritual revolution. Some spirits from this high level classes also train themselves or guide others at such places.
Yes, thank you, Maryam. This is one of the crucial point of, from today's session. So avatars, who, who are the avatars? For example, Shakyamuni Buddha and Jesus Christ. So these are, these figures are so-called avatars. So they visited India and also Jesus Christ also visited India for the spiritual training. And after several, several years, he went back to Israel and he became the savior. So Hannah, could you help us?
Such training places do exist though there are of course spirits that do not go there and reside in the higher realms of heaven in the spiritual. As far as I have seen, there are at least several thousand spirits undergoing spiritual training at this kind of training center in spiritual.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, many people want to visit Shambhara or spiritual places so that they can do spiritual training. Yes, so I think yeah, that this is the end of today's session. So master is talking about the, the secret world of revision. Hmm, so, so this master always taught, taught, teach us, this world is just a temporary world and this world is a training ground. So because it's a training ground, there is a special rotation called, called spiritual fields. Hmm, yes, spiritual magnetic fields. And in the spiritual magnetic fields such as Mount Everest, Mount Fuji, uh, there are also a special spirit world exists on the same spot. Hmm, and then, and the Shambhara, so master told us, told us about the Shambhara. A Shambhara is a most important, or a most sophisticated, spiritually sophisticated place on earth. So even the space being want to visit Shambhara to, uh, to do spiritual training so that they can become a savior after the soul training. Hmm, and also master told us about the, uh, avatars. Hmm, so people can become masters and masters can become avatars after they do spiritual trading in a special rotation. And even, even after the people die, they want to visit Shambhara. So if you, if you pass away, you might want to go to Shambhara to, it's kind of like a utopia in the spirit world, utopia, hmm, it's kind of like a utopia on earth, spiritual utopia on earth. So, so in the spirit world and also on this earth, there is a, there is a place called Shambhara. And it is nearby, it is near, uh, Himalaya, I mean Nepal and India. So Shakyamuni Buddha visited India and the Jesus Christ visited the Shambhara as well. And also the, another incarnation of Jesus Christ, uh, is John Lennon. And John Lennon visited India and then he became, he awakened to his mission too. So yeah, yeah, now I really want to go to Shambhara. And if you can train yourself as Shambhara, you can, you can improve your spirituality to the next level. So, so this is a secret of this world. And today we, we still have twenty minutes. So today, uh, we are going to, uh, we are going to make a spiritual screen around us. So this, um, this contemplation is called spirit, the contemplation to make, of making a spiritual screen. So, uh, so if you want, so it's important to have a mindset that this world is just a temporary world and another world is a real world. And we human beings, a spiritual being, and we just visited this world for a soul training. So it's not, uh, this world is not the real world. And if we can, and if we can grasp the perspective of the spiritual perspective of life, uh, you can emit the, hmm, you can receive the guidance from the heavenly world. So yeah, let's grasp the meaning of the spiritual perspective of life and let's become one with the heavenly world so that we can make a spiritual screen around us. So now we are going to practice this contemplation. So please tighten your back and relax your shoulder. And harmonize your breathing and practice the breathing method of concentration. So breathe in slowly and breathe out slowly. So this world is just a temporary world. And this world that we are living is not the real world. The real world is a heavenly world. So please feel like you are literally spiritual being living in this world.
In this world, you can see the material world and people usually attached to something material in this world. But he was saying that it is variable or it's useful for that person and want to get it and want to have it and don't want to miss it. So the starting point of the Ikkyo is possession. Possession means having something. For example, there's wife and husband and husband think that wife is mine. So all of her is mine and also the wife think like that. Please check your mind and inside you there should be something, the same conception of the evil spirit. For example, seeking money a lot. In Buddhism, greed is some kind of bad thing. Greed means to get a lot from this world for your own sake, for your fame, for your richness or for your family or for your power. Please discover this greed in you. In addition to that, you must check your attachment regarding relationship between your business environment or business colleagues or within your family or school friends or like that. If you attach too much to someone and it's not so sacred and you don't do love that takes, it's a different mind you should have. You must check your mind and correct yourself. Be transparent at that time. Be transparent. Transparent means like the water, like the air. Be free as a clean stream of the river. And think that everything is passing by. Everything is passing by through me. Today must be change into yesterday. And tomorrow surely come to today and today will go away to long, long ago. Passing by, passing by and it's unseeable past it shall be. There is nothing imperishable in this world. There is nothing endurable in this world. And this world is shadow. This world is not real. The real world is waiting for you within years or several years. Everything was experience, just experience. This world is a training course prepared by God, Buddha. So don't attach anything in this world. At the time, you cannot have anything that distract evil spirits. I mean, they can discover anything in you or around you that they want to get. And after that, please pray like the following. In the name of Lord Erkantare, in the name of Lord Erkantare. Get away. Go away, evil spirit. Get away, evil spirit. Go away, evil spirits. You cannot intrude into this sacred atmosphere. I'm concentrating to make a Bhutan utopia and I'm exercising to get my spiritual growth. So don't bother me, don't disturb me. Just get away from here in the name of Erkantare. Just get away from here in the name of Erkantare. In the name of Lord Erkantare. Get away from here. Get away from here. Go away from here. Go away from here. I'm just concentrating on Erkantare. And I'm with the Erkantare. I'm in the light of Erkantare. Think like that, uh and there should appear a kai kai uh spiritual screen around you. No evil spirit can touch you, influence you, or talk to you. They cannot intrude your sacred atmosphere. And at the time you can get the spiritual screen and you can protect yourself.
Please enjoy contemplation. So how did you find the uh contemplation? So, yes, we did uh in the evening prayer, we did recovery from illness and also exercising evil spirits. But what is important is understanding of the truth. The more we understand the truth, the more hmm, the more we can connect with the heavenly world. And especially when it comes to the uh we are truths. Uh what matters the most is a spiritual perspective of life. Can you understand uh the what is human being, what this world is? And what is the purpose of uh of this earth and so on? So let us deepen the understanding of the uh truth through the laws of secret. Yes, so master said this book, this book is a book of experiences and experiences. And as to the spiritual eyes of religious leader, the world is truly a brighter place that is guided by another set of rules. Hmm. Yes, and thank you very much for your attendance. And I hope you find something new and something beautiful uh through the laws of secret. Uh thank you very much. I will stop the recording.